So why don't I? As we call to order here at 7:30, I will. If I can.
I already.
Myself how to do it.
Started the recording, Eric.
Right, I'm looking for the share feature.
For a screen share?
Yeah.
It should be on the, there's like a a bottom menu bar and it says shares.
The bottom in the middle of the screen, I think.
Yes, green. Oh, there. Yeah, it's green. I don't know how I manage that. Okay, well. There. Here. So I will share this so we can work from that for the agenda. So call to order at 7:30. Second item of business is additions, corrections, and corrections to the agenda. I don't have anything to add or correct. Do you have anything? Does anyone else have anything to add or correct?
I don't.
Okay.
Nope.
Move to approve.
Can you tell me who's present?
Yes. So we have. Everybody but Kathy and then Martha and Jillian. Did Katie join us?
Yeah, Katie and Eliza.
Ah. You guys snuck in on me. Okay. Okay. And then item number three here. Did you get them then, Janie?
I got Martha, Gillian, Eliza.
And Katie.
Oh, Katie. Okay.
Okay. And then conveniently brings us up to item number three on the agenda was just opportunity for public to address the board. Would any members of our public like to address the board?
I'm good. Just here for the company.
And great company it is.
It is.
It is. Okay, on that note, then we'll proceed to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes for May 19. And I do have an item on here to ask for a correction on that was pointed out to me after I had sent the minutes out to everybody, which was on item. Let's see here. Item 10D. No, 10B. When I change over to screen over screens on mine, do you see the change as well?
No.
No, so you're still.
If you just shared the, if you're switching between programs and you only shared Chrome, it won't.
Okay, I always wondered about that. Okay.
If you share desktop, it will.
Under section 10B, the minutes state that all non-resident cards will be available at $16. But that's only true for residents in apartment buildings or mobile homes. Most documents have to pay a tax equivalent fee. I think the easiest way to to do that, and I will hop down to the paragraph here. But so this section here, I think the easiest way to amend that would be to just drop everything after it should be noted. And then anybody that's interested in the details can look at the, at the document that was approved.
Okay.
Does that sound?
Yeah.
Sound good, Jenny?
Sure, I will.
Hey. I see you got somebody hanging out with you, Janie.
Yeah. He seems to have developed some Velcro.
Well, he should while hanging around with grandma.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can.
Okay.
Do that.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments regarding the minutes? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve as amended.
I saw move.
Cal, so moves. A second.
Scott?
Yeah.
All right. And we'll do just a basic voice vote on this. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone not in favor, say nay. Okay.
Did you hear my husband being a smartass? I'm sorry.
If you're absent, say yes.
Go away.
Heard her nephew say no.
I did not, but there's some.
So that takes us up to.
No, but there's some, something on the fridge.
Okay, that takes us up to the financial reports. We'll scroll this down here.
You've got two months to financial reports here, right, Eric?
Yes, I do. Okay, so a few highlights in the financial reports. Starting out with the ones on May, which are the ones I've got up on the screen here. For, on page 15, you can see the 42,127 that we have are in May, initial deposit of property tax revenue. And then in June, when we get to that, that'll be our second. Two other quick items here of note. One is the charge here on the second page of the 6,875 under other professional services. That is the first annual payment to Nikki Stenoblen for overseeing the website as our new webmaster, as well as the final payment for having completed the development of the website, which is now live and is a big and exciting improvement. And I did also want to draw attention to the printing costs, which you may notice versus the same month last year are significantly lower. The 1,100 versus the 2,800. The big reason there is that because of the nature of our programming and the unstable nature of just everything right now. Our newsletter that went out is only four pages, which is a lot shorter than we usually send out and didn't include any inserts like we had been doing for summer reading club. So that's the reason for that lower cost there. Last item that I was going to draw attention to was noteworthy on the renewal on the financials in May as the big charge is the $21,950. If you look on page three of the May financials that we pay each year to innovative interfaces for Sierra, which is the integrated library system that powers the library. So that's a big one-time annual charge that happens then in May. Any questions on the May as I scroll down to take us to the June financial reports?
No. No.
Okay, hopping down to the June financial reports. The big item that, that you'll probably notice right away on the June reports is that we got our first really big chunk of the property tax revenue. The two really big chunks are one that arrives in June and then there's one that arrives in usually September or October. The arrival of the.
Eric, I'm sorry, didn't you say we, we got something in May from them too?
Yes, we did, and a bit bigger than we usually, than we usually get. It was about, I want to say 40,000. I scroll back here.
I think 42.
Yeah, it was 42. 42,127 and some change, which is more than we got last year, which is good because we didn't get as much in June as we did last year. And the reason, so you can see in, in June, then we got 356,000. Do you see, do you guys see things when I highlight them here? Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I do.
Good, because that's helpful. Excellent. So we got 356,000 this month, but last year we got 477. The big reason for the variance, the difference there is that is people taking advantage of a program that Lake County had put into place, which basically allowed people to delay paying their property taxes, didn't waive them, didn't provide for anybody paying anything less or any change in assessment or value. But what it did was give people an extra 60 days. So the biggest reason that the number here is lower is people taking advantage of that to not have to pay their taxes right away. So right now, that's not lost revenue that we're, we're looking at. It does bear continuing to watch. But most likely what's going to happen is that we'll get the bulk of what we had levied for. It's just going to be more spread out than it has been in previous years. I should also note that the, the previous two years, two years ago in particular, but also last year to some extent, the, the taxes had been really front-loaded versus previous years. And that was still to some extent the fallout of the, the change in the tax code.
Right.
That, two years ago, that changed significantly. We saw the taxes really front-loaded with a lot of people paying them early in a big way. And we still saw some holdover from that last year where people were paying, still trending more towards paying earlier. So that's kind of highlighting that as, as well, that people scaling back this year and paying their taxes a little bit later, taking advantage of that program, looks like a little bit bigger variance because we were coming off of a very different trend.
Eric, do you ever get advance notices what's coming in a particular month or you just know at the end of the month when that number appears?
No, I don't get advanced notice. I wish I could.
Okay.
So I could double check with the, the village, but my understanding is that they don't get any advanced notice. And that's who we hear from.
Okay.
You know, I hear from Bettina when she gets the numbers and then is moving the funds into our accounts for deposit. But I don't think she gets numbers until they arrive. And she needs to move them.
Okay.
Eric, this is John. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I had to dial in. I got bumped off. I'm on the phone.
Glad you made it back in.
Okay.
Okay. I would also point out that in terms of the revenue, that while we are seeing a bit of a, a gap that's opening up there because we're not, we're not issuing passports, so we're not getting funds for passports right now. We are going to be starting to get some photocopy charges, but we haven't been getting that. You know, and those will probably lag a bit as well, the, the rental fees. But all in all, when looking at the, the services and the fines and fees, right now, we're only looking at about $4,500 of, of actual lost revenue thus far this year.
That's really not bad.
It's not bad. What really skews the numbers, if you just look at the bottom line in terms of the revenue overall, is this number here that we got a big donation of over 17,000 from the Friends. First thing, last fiscal year. That was for the, the laptops and everything that goes into those as well as a number of other things that were some real big high item purchases that the Friends made for us, which is fantastic. But looking at the financials now, it does mean that we've got, you know, looking at the, the bottom line here in terms of miscellaneous revenue, you've got 3,000 versus 17,000. Well, you know, the, the variance isn't that bad. Because there's this big number here that's sitting on the scale.
When are you going to start issuing passports again?
We're working up to it. The challenge with those is that it's kind of a fairly personal face-to-face sit-down prolonged interaction where it's a staff member sitting down across a table, passing things back and forth with a group of folks usually for 15 to 20 minutes, usually at minimum. So.
There's another, there's another issue too, is that right now a passport is pretty worthless because there's no place you can go that requires a passport.
That's true. There's, there's not a lot. There are a few.
I would also, the State Department has, I think they've started processing them again, but they weren't for a long time. Just, they were doing it for like emergencies, basically. But my, my dad had submitted his passport application, like I think it was the week of the pandemic, like when everything started shutting down. And he still hasn't received his yet, so.
Oh, wow.
It says it's in process, but I know that from the State Department side of things, things are still backed up.
Yeah, and that's, as Martha noted it as, as well, there, there are some countries where you can travel to right now, but with the travel restrictions in place, most countries aren't. You can't go to right now.
Those countries aren't admitting Americans. Simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Canadians won't even let their baseball team play in Canada because they don't want American athletes to come to Canada.
Good times.
Yeah, Eric, could, could I go back to your, your, just to clarify, make sure I get it right? You said we're only, we're only down about 4,500?
Let me take a look at my notes here. Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought you said.
So right now, we're only down 4,500. Ballpark.
Okay.
And that's passports and fines and fees and things. The non-resident fees have kept up pretty well because, you know, folks are still making use of library resources. And if you don't keep up on your non-resident charges, then you know, then you lose that online access. So those have fallen off a bit, but they're not, you know, zeroing out like obviously the passport fees and other things are. So overall, you know, it could be worse, could be a lot worse.
Yeah.
Which I know I probably shouldn't say because 2020 is likely to just look at that as a challenge. But that's where we're at. The, let's see. Okay. So scrolling down here, a couple other quick items to point out. The office supplies, if I can find them. You'll know that the office supplies are particularly high right now versus where we were last year. The, so it's so far this year, 2,300 versus 557 at this point last year. The reason we're so far up there is that is where a lot of our PPE is getting charged to. So if you're wondering about why we're burning through that budget line, that's why. So we're getting a lot of masks, a lot of hand sanitizer. Getting the Lysol wipes is proving to be an interesting sort of scavenger hunt event. So most places limit you to two, so how many times can you visit?
Eric, can you, can you still buy Lysol like in a bottle? Do you know, I mean, I haven't tried to do this, but.
If you can find it.
We do have some spray as well.
Yeah.
We have some spray. Because I'm thinking, you know, it, it would be possible. I mean, I'm not far from the library, so I'd be happy to volunteer my washing machine, but I mean, we could, we could buy some, some, I don't know, some cleaning cloths or rags or something and, and use just the solution in water rather than, rather than trying to find the wipes and then throwing them away after every use. I don't know how you feel about that.
We'll keep you in mind because we've got some microfiber cloths on order.
Okay.
So we're, we're starting
you know.
Shift that way. We, we've got some things that the Lysol wipes don't work on where we need to be shifting between different cleaning solutions. So the reusable method is growing in appeal, I think.
Yeah, for, for lots of reasons, really. I mean, this whole pandemic has been an ecological nightmare with disposable stuff, you know.
Yes.
So anything we could do to, to mitigate that, I, I would be more than happy to come down, you know, twice a week and pick up whatever and run it through my machine.
Well, you'll be very happy to know in terms of the, the ecological side of things that first, that with the, the masks that we did opt to go with, we had a staff member that's really good at sewing in Anna, and she put together some very good cloth face masks for staff. So that's a big reusable item there so that we don't have to rely on the disposables.
Right, right.
And, and second, I, I can, I could tell you for a fact that, that is something that we've had as a consideration that continues to come up for us in, in our conversations that we want to keep in mind. That we are not just burning through disposable things. In, in part, you know, because of the environment, but also because you know, if you get yourself caught up in, in thinking of, you know, going with the, the cheapest immediate solution, which is invariably the disposable one, usually long-term, that ends up being the more expensive.
Oh, you bet.
If you, if you can find, get yourself into a good reusable rhythm, then long-term, that's often cheaper. So definitely keeping an eye on that. And in terms of using things like the garbage bags that we're using for quarantining items when they come back, we're definitely trying to keep, keep down the number of things that we're burning through.
Good.
And then the only other item that I had to draw attention to here was that in June, we very excitingly have all these numbers under capital equipment again. So that is because we are buying things, buying books again. Actual physical honest-to-goodness books. Previously up till, up till this month, this section of the, the budget, if you look back, for a few months back had really been zeroed out, except for the digital resources. But started June, we got ourselves set up with being able to catalog. And we've got Laura, who is our cataloger, doing that primarily at home. We've got her set up for that. And, you know, then the, the workflow there for getting the things to her and then getting them from her to the library in a nice, easy and safe way. So that's been good to have that going again. And important because we're not doing curbside and you don't want to throw a library without new stuff for people to look at. No one would come.
I don't think that's entirely true, but.
Probably not. Okay, so those are the financial reports. Any questions on those? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve. And we'll do, and we'll do one approval for May and June together.
Okay, so I moved that we approved May and June financial report.
And I'll second.
Cal moves and Scott seconds. And because it's financials, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Butler.
Yes.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Hanselman.
Yes.
Trustee Church.
Yes.
Trustee Stroh.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Then that takes us up to the always exciting checks. And I have a couple items to draw attention to on those. Not quite as many. Okay. On. Let's see, looking at my notes here. On the first page here, I would draw attention to this, which is the EBSCO subscription renewal, which is the first portion of our annual periodicals renewal. We do, most of our periodicals are physical print ones through a, a service so that everything is nice and easily centralized. And EBSCO is that service provider. So that's a charge that shows up at the start of each fiscal year. One charge that showed up in recent fiscal years, but will only show up for another fiscal year or two. I believe we've got two more fiscal year payments left after this is our payment to the North Suburban Employee Benefits Cooperative, which is the new benefits group that we joined a couple years back. And because we are, the Village of Lake Bluff is a new subscriber, a new member, we have an additional payment that we're making into the pool each year for our first five years as members. So that's what that check represents. And those are the two points that I had for the May checks. Does anyone have any questions on the, the May checks before I hop over to the June ones? Cal?
No, I have no questions. I have a question about how to get back that I lost the what you're showing on the screen.
Really?
Yeah. Instead, I have Scott. Well, that's probably better.
Um. Let's see here.
So Cal, you probably switched your view.
Wait a minute.
Where it says.
Yeah.
Oh, I, okay, now it's back. Yeah, I got it.
There we go. That was easy. Well done, Eliza.
You're welcome.
Okay. So for the June checks, want to draw attention to here that we had budgeted for that was a repair that we were able to still go ahead and get done was the 4,702 doors done right. This was looking back, we had the emergency exit doors in the wood building, the one in the museum, as well as the one in particular down in the preschool room downstairs that were rusting away and they were getting difficult to open, which is never something that you want to, to have as a feature for your emergency exits. So we replaced those, which are two solid emergency exits, and that is what that cost there represents.
So the two east side doors, right?
Yes. The two least visible doors.
Yep.
If you look along the, the exit from the staff parking lot there, there's a stairwell and a staircase.
Yes.
And then the other one that I wanted to point out was that I am included in the checks. I figured I would mention that since I don't usually pop up there. The 5979 is reimbursement for Lysol wipes. Part of the adventure with obtaining. Uh, part of the adventure with obtaining the Lysol wipes, was recruiting members of staff, family and friends in other places in the country where the wipes were more readily available. So, um, I had, um, uh, my mom and my sister purchased some wipes for me, which is why I'm, have the reimbursement here. Ordinarily purchasing something like that, I, I would have done on a company credit card. But, um, I had them acting as, uh, my assistants, and then they provided the receipts, which I passed along. So, uh, that's what that represents, and I assure you, it's very well documented. So if anybody wants to see those.
I tell you, Eric, when I saw that one made out to you, I had to giggle.
Well, it's, um, it's unusual. Um, you know, I was trying to avoid having my name anywhere in the invoices here just because I don't think it's a great optics thing. Like, why are we cutting a check directly to the, uh, you know, directly to Eric? But, you know, we've, in, in, in terms of some of the things that we've been trying to get done here, we've circumstances have encouraged creativity.
That's for sure.
One of the retailers that I went to for those kind of wipes told me that they're now all being sent to hospitals. So for the foreseeable future, it's going to be virtually impossible to buy them in stores.
Yeah. Um, I had noticed that it seemed to be getting more difficult, um, in places rather than easier to get those. We do have to our advantage that, um, the, um, we, we, we did talk to the village about, uh, just to see if they had any thoughts as far as, you know, how we might get those, um, and just kind of loop them in that we were having some trouble getting a hold of some of the PPE. And, um, it, it looks like Glenn, um, is over at Village Hall is going to be able to hook us up with a lot of the things that we need. So we'll still need to pay for them, but we'll be able to piggyback on the village's order. And because they made place orders for the first responders, um, that gets us into a, a pretty good queue, uh, as far as getting things.
Great.
So we've already gotten some disposable masks through them, which were.
Gloves as well.
And gloves. Oh, we got the gloves too. Yeah. The gloves were proving to be more of a challenge. Um, and the masks are, so we've got a pile of them there right at the front door. Um, so that anybody that comes in that doesn't have one, we can get them one. Okay, any questions on checks? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I still move.
I'll second.
All right, Cal moves, Scott seconds. And roll call vote, um, trustee Butler.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Hanselman.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
All right, checks are approved.
Did we have to list some numbers or something? Don't we usually?
Oh, yeah.
I, I can get that. Don't worry about it. It's.
Yeah. Um, we understood that in the, the motion to be the, uh, the checks for May and June as presented in the, the packet. Um, so I think as long as Janie pulls the numbers, we should be fine.
Okay.
Unless anybody really wants to go back and re-vote.
No, I don't. I want to go forward. I want to get out of this meeting sometime this year.
Oh, but we're.
You're hurting our feelings.
We're great company, Cal. Okay. Well, we are burning through the, uh, uh, the agenda here, so let's keep pushing forward. Uh, next item up would be committee reports and flipping over so that I'm manipulating the screen that everybody can actually see. We did not have any committees that met. Is there anything that any members of the committee would like to share? Okay. Then that takes us up to our two items of new business, um, one of which is an action, the other which is informational. The action item is a value statement. Scrolling on down here. Okay. Um, so this is a short on page 10A statement of library values. Um, strategy A1 of the long-range plan, which was approved in 2019, included, um, as a goal, creating a set of library values, um, as well as a library vision. The value side of that in particular, um, ended up bumped up a bit on the, the staff to-do list, uh, just because 2020 has been, there's been a lot of disruptive events. And, you know, with disruptive events, you've probably seen a lot of companies and other organizations that, uh, for various things that have happened throughout the year, you know, putting out, you know, you know, we as an organization stand for X, we as an organization stand for Y. Um, as a public library, our, our brand is, is pretty fixed. We stand for open access to information. We don't stand for, uh, you know, false information being purposefully shared as though it was true stuff. You know, we stand for equal access, um, as an institution. We consider ourselves to be fundamental towards intellectual freedom and, and, uh, a very democratic organization, um, in that we, um, really focus on that true access, full access to information to everybody. So as the, the year has progressed, um, as a staff, we came around to the perspective that it would probably be helpful to us to have that value statement sooner, um, rather than later. So we bumped it up a bit on the to-do list. Part because it was useful, um, and something useful that we could do as a staff that would not, be tremendously time-consuming. In particular, because, um, you know, I, I think as an organization that, that we do have a strong ethos and, and sense of what we are and what we do as a library, um, we just didn't really have it written down. And I, I think that pretty well summarizes up what this is, so I would just ask if anybody has any questions.
Eric, there were two words that came to me as I looked at this. Just throw it out. One was courtesy.
Courtesy?
Yes.
Let's see.
Which is not included, and I, I'm wondering if it should be. And while you're thinking about that, the other one was transparency.
I think transparency in particular jumps out to me as potentially a good, um, solid addition. I'm kind of wondering if the courtesy might fall under service. And maybe if, and maybe we might reword service to include courtesy within that. So that the, so that the description there of service includes, uh, that the, that's friendly, courteous service.
And it's just, when I'm at the library, it feels like that's a big part of what makes the library the way it is.
Yeah.
Is that the staff of the library are just very nice people to deal with.
Yeah. I think that the, yeah. I think that, that idea was intended to be included in, in terms of service, but, uh, didn't get spelled out perhaps as explicitly there as, as we could have done. So I think that that'll be a good add, uh, to make sure that that is included there. And I, I think transparency.
You could possibly put that with stewardship.
I was kind of looking at, at that too. Yeah. I think that could either be, if we don't add that as a bullet, I, I think that can be worked into the stewardship line. I think that's another good word to get worked in, in some fashion.
Why you can't add a bullet?
We can.
Just add a bill, a bullet, uh, addressing courtesy? Instead of trying to wind it into something else?
Sure. And honestly, um, taking a step back, I'm probably just talking around, um, the editorial process here and working myself in circles a little bit. What we'll do is, um, I worked on this with, uh, Martha, uh, in terms of getting it drafted. So, uh, Martha and I will, uh, take a look and dig back into this and see where the best place to add it would be. That's going to make the most sense.
My only, my only comment about sometimes stewardship can be a confusing word. People interpret stewardship to mean different things. So I don't know if you want to take that into account, but, um.
We'll take a look at that too.
Okay.
That hadn't occurred to me, but then, um, I have a very particular thing that I envision when I think stewardship and, yeah. With, with, with that note, I, I will take a look and see, um, whether that might be the most accurate, um, in terms of getting the point across.
Eric, this is John.
Hi, John.
Would, would this be an appropriate forum to talk about, uh, recruiting and hiring practices, or is that covered somewhere else?
Uh, recruiting and hiring practices are included in our personnel handbook.
Okay.
So those we've got, um, very thoroughly covered.
Okay.
This, this is more, you know, who we are as an organization, what we do.
Alright.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So I, I guess if you're, if you and Martha are going to tweak this a little bit more, no.
We'll tweak it. Yeah, we'll tweak it and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Okay. Um, if anybody thinks of any other comments, um, thoughts, questions, after the meeting, just, uh, send me an email. Okay. Page 11, um, getting into the elevens here, the other item that we have in our new business. Uh, this is provided strictly informationally. Um, I'm not going to go through, um, this point by point. It's really intended as an FYI so that the board has this, um, and can be aware of what we've got that we're working on. Since getting ourselves open again, um, in what we're referring to as the abridged edition of the Lake Bluff Public Library, um, has required some um, changes to how we normally operate. The, the biggest ones, uh, on those are that, uh, following the guidelines provided by, uh, the state of Illinois, we are, um, putting a capacity limit on how many individuals come into the library, uh, which is 25, and that's, uh, 25 patrons. So it doesn't include people at the museum or library staff members. Uh, we are requiring masks. Uh, we're doing a lot to encourage social distancing and children, we raise the age as far as how old you need to be to be away from a parent while in the library. Um, just because kids are more of a challenge to always keep them aware of social distancing and, and other things um, of that nature. You know, and we're very much, um, subscribing to, um, the gradual process, uh, that I know that the mayor of Chicago and others have talked about where, uh, we just opened up this first week and we have a particular initial set of services that we're offering. And then our plan is to gradually increase those week by week, um, as time goes on. And, um, get ourselves fingers crossed eventually back to a point where we're at, uh, full service again. Uh, we did have our first day where we were open again, um, this past Monday, uh, which was super exciting and went very well. You know, we didn't have anybody that was kicking up a fuss. Everybody followed the rules, um, that we laid out as far as masks and social distancing and things. Really, I would say that the, the weird thing, um, about it was just that, 2020 has been so weird and the, the hoops that we've had to jump through to get to this point where we can get ourselves reopen, uh, the physical space in a limited capacity again, have been at times just felt so extraordinary that, um, having our patrons come in and have very ordinary interactions with us and, you know, be talking about, uh, what they want to read next and things like that was kind of the weird thing was, if that makes any sense, that, you know, people came in and they had ordinary library interactions and conversations with us. And that, that was almost at this point for 2020, just mind-blowing. But it was also a really positive experience because, um, you know, we're, we're librarians, you know, we, we live for being able to help patrons, do reading recommendations and, you know, interact with them and, and be a part of what they're doing and, and their day. And, you know, it's, huh, you know, I don't want to overstate it, but Monday, to some extent, was, was a bit like, you know, being able to see color again after only four months of black and white. It was nice.
I think you guys have done a really great job under the most difficult circumstance of communicating and being conservative about the way you've approached this. I think you really deserve very high marks for the way you've handled the last four months.
I would second that.
We've got a great staff. We really do.
Would you repeat the days and hours that the library is open for us to come in?
Right now, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Um, but like the scope of services, we're hoping to continue to be able to expand those.
Okay.
Right now, we're still leaning pretty heavily on the curbside service.
Yeah.
And making that available so that folks don't have to come in if they don't want to.
So you have curbside service at other hours? Like on Tuesday and Thursday, for instance?
Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday and Saturday afternoons, um, curbside pickup. And that's still ongoing and still very popular.
So Thursday is all day long? I mean, morning and afternoon?
Uh, Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, the curbside, um, on those days also runs from 2:00 to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Technically, it's 1:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays since we're.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's right. Thank you, Katie. And then the, the other days of the, the week, um, the, the mornings, uh, for all six days that we're open, you know, we're, we're focused on shelving materials, on pulling holds for patrons, on processing requests, and various behind-the-scenes things. Uh, one of the things that we've found about, um, the variance of the services that we're providing is that, tends to be a lot more time-intensive, work-intensive than our usual. You know, the, the curbside in particular, you know, having everybody place, place their holds for materials and then us go and get them. Um, you know, that, that requires a lot more staff time than, you know, everybody going and. You know, that that requires a lot more staff time than, you know, everybody going and getting their own selections. But we're getting more efficient with things week by week, which is great. And yeah, clipping along, clipping along. Staff has done fantastic. I can't say enough good things about how adaptable everybody's done, how creative everybody's been in terms of problem solving. You know, the being in this work environment, as I know, you know, Bill, I'm sure you can attest as well. It's stressful. There's a lot of uncertainty. There's a lot of thing, you know, things keep changing week, week in, week out, as far as what you can do and what needs to happen. You know, you get one thing set up and then that's, you know, a completely new workflow that you need to get into place. And then it feels like you've got to turn around and start on another new one straight away. But, you know, staff have rolled with that really, really well. You know, I'm not saying people haven't gotten stressed. And, you know, needed to let off some steam sometimes at the end of some particularly stressful days, but we're keeping on, keeping on. And I'm very proud of everybody. It's it's interesting days to be in any work environment, I think. Some more than more than others, but it's it's crazy everywhere. Okay, so any questions on reopening? If you do think of any after the meeting, again, just send me an email. I think everybody's got my my cell phone address. You can always send me a text as well. That's fine. Okay. Barring other questions, I will move on then to the director's report and I will call attention to the award that Martha and Jillian obtained from the American Library Association for the excellent newsletter that was put together for the library last summer. That was the Reading is Magic newsletter, which was an amazing piece of graphic design. So that's fantastic that that they received that acknowledgement and that award. So kudos. It is.
Yeah, very good.
It is. And I look forward to finding a little blurb to include that in somewhere in a corner of the of the newsletter. Always nice to be able to work those accolades in there.
And a world winning publication.
Yes.
Forget to add that.
Yep. And then the other item that I would note, which I don't think I managed to make it in here is that I did learn from Village Hall that Marlene Schible will be leaving the village staff.
Well, that's not good news.
What does she do now?
She is the Assistant Village Finance Director. So and as the and she's the member of the team on the finance director team with the two of them that has been primarily responsible for working with the library on our finances.
Has she been with the village for a long time or not?
She's been there as long as I've been director. I want to say she's been there at least a solid dozen years.
Okay.
Trying to remember the, my brain is failing me this late in the day, unfortunately. She's leaving for a post where she's going to be a finance director.
Villa Park.
Villa Park. I knew there was a villa in there somewhere and probably a park. I just wasn't. Park Villa didn't sound right and I wasn't sure how to string it together otherwise. Okay, Villa Park. Thank you, Martha.
So is there a search underway to replace her by the village or or? I mean, she's she is.
I haven't seen anything.
That's gonna hurt.
My understanding, short term, is that Tom Dunn, who's another piece of the equation in the financial team that they have over there will be picking up short term, some of the responsibilities. I don't know how things are going to shake out long term. I haven't seen anything posted yet. You know, it's fairly quick turnaround. She's going to be. I think she did a pretty well, I don't know how long it took for for me to the news to get down through the network to me, but she doesn't have too many more days with the village here. So I do think that as part of the August meeting, that a vote of thanks and I am kind of discussing with staff as well, what we might provide for her as far as a keepsake or gift that we could give her and thanks for everything that she's done for the library over the years. But I think that would be, that would be nice, would be appropriate. She's been she's been a good egg, been great to work with. I've learned a lot from her. And, you know, I do wish you do wish her the best. I'm it'll be sad to see her go. I'm glad that we still have, we'll still have Bettina, who just joined us and has been a great addition to the team there. And I take solace from the fact that we did just get Bettina, which suggests that we should have a having a good track record for for hiring good folks suggests that we'll be able to get another good person in. So.
So Bettina is staying.
Still sad to see Marlene go, though. Bettina is staying. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. For which I'm grateful. And you know, I'm sure at this juncture with everything that's going on in the in the world and with Marlene departing that if she even looked askance at the at the door, Drew and Kathy would probably tackle her and start throwing money at her. So. So I will have something then included in the packet for August that we can do something for her. Okay, any questions on any of the other items in the director's report? If not, I think that takes us up here to pretty close to the end. Only other item of two items of note that I would point out. We might want before we adjourn to take a look at at least starting to think about who's going to do the August meeting, August and September meetings for the Friends of the Library. We will have. Well, no, this is the July meeting. So August is coming up. That's terrifying.
Are they done in person or on Zoom?
No, they're doing them on Zoom. The Friends of the Library are surprisingly adept at Zoom. So if anybody can volunteer, we'll take a volunteer to do August 15th. Otherwise, you know, we can all go and check our calendars after the meeting and anybody that would like to volunteer can shoot me an email.
Do they have one scheduled for September as well?
Yep, should have it up on the screen here, which is August the 15th and September the 19th.
And you need somebody for both of those?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll I'll take September. I can't do August, but I'll take September.
Scott for September.
If you give me two seconds to look at my calendar, I think I can do August, but let me just make sure.
Yeah, we're out of town in August.
Yeah, I'll take October.
Ah, excellent. So we've got Bill for October, Scott for September. And then maybe Cal for August.
Will you or they? Will you or they send Zoom invitations for those meetings?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about the background noise.
I think he's volunteering for the November Friends Meeting.
I can do August, Eric.
Okay, I'll put Cal down for August.
So they sent a link or something then so you can get on their Zoom thing?
Yeah, they they send the link around. Actually, Rachel? Do you want to see the baby, Janie?
I would love to see the baby.
I want to see the baby.
We all want to see the baby.
He's a little bit fussy, so he'll make a quick appearance.
Oh, hey, Leo.
Look at that.
Buddy.
Oh, my goodness.
He just woke up and he's not very happy. Wants some more food, so I'm gonna hand him the mama so he gets some more food. Say bye bye.
Bye, Sam.
It was a little comber. But he he woke up very hungry, so. Okay, and so that's the Friends meeting dates. So Cal, Scott, and then Bill. So we've got those fleshed out and I did send out a, just before the meeting started, a slightly adjusted budget variance doc, just to show where we're at in terms of the budget that we have going this year versus what we had expected to have. So do take a look at that and let me know if you have any questions on that. Other than that, I think we're pretty much at the end of the meeting. Unless anybody has anything else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Eric, real quick, just to be clear, are you going to make sure that we get invites to the Friends meetings?
Yes. Yes.
So it'll come from you.
Yeah. They make sure that the staff has them and then we'll forward them along. They did cancel for for June. They're they're not so keen on the Zoom meetings that that they hold them lightly. Put it that way.
I'm with them.
So yeah, I will make sure that everybody has those. Any other questions?
Eric, I have one quick one. You mentioned your cell phone number and I do not have that. That was, I would have called you to tell you couldn't get on.
Well, did you? Did you see the text I sent?
Oh, does that? Okay, is it in there? Okay, I'll put it in.
Yeah, that should be. Yeah, I'll send you another one here to make double sure that you've got it.
Your cell phone number?
Beg your pardon?
I don't think I have your cell phone number.
Huh. Tell you what.
You know, the list where you give us all the
Yeah.
board members, is it on that list?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to make double certain, I will send out a quick email with the number.
Okay.
So that we can all start from the same point.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Other questions?
That's it.
Okay. In that case, I would look for a motion to adjourn at 8:34.
I move that we adjourn at 8:34.
Second.
Who is that?
That was John.
John.
I got bumped out. I'm on the phone.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No one opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
All right.
Enjoy.
Everyone.
You too.